Are we ready? Stand up, pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Warmer weather, which makes things a lot better. So today is our number 10 meeting of the year, and it's Thursday, March 11th, at 10 o'clock a.m. Welcome everyone here again. And I see in our mists our Congressman, Tim Ryan. Tim, can you wave?
Oh, there's the honorable.
You're looking happy today.
Wow, look how happy. How's it going?
Good.
See you.
I get to come home today, so I am happy.
All good.
Pretty cool.
You're looking good, Tim. Do you want to go ahead?
You look pretty good, Senator.
Hey, what's up, David, Commissioner?
Don't call him names.
Do I have to be formal?
No.
He's trying to bust your balloons, Tim.
No.
He does a good job of that.
Well, listen Congressman, we're very honored to have you here with us. I know you're in DC, working very hard for us, and I guess you have a good announcement that you'd like to make to the Valley.
Yeah, so I called you guys last night, and Carol invited me to come on here. So Commissioner Traficanty, I appreciate the opportunity here. And yesterday, we passed the COVID-19 relief bill. And a lot of the money in that bill was for state and local governments. We've been trying to get state and local support into these pandemic bills for the last year. And we were finally able to do it.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Tim.
That was Audrey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Where did I end?
We were finally able to do it with the getting an end to the bill.
Yeah, so we were able to get the state and local money into the bill. And so local counties and cities are going to get some money. And they worked out the calculation. It may fluctuate a little bit, but Mahoning County is in line for $44 million to help with any revenue loss that you may have seen over the course of the last year because of the pandemic. The money, Pat Genetti will be glad to know that could be used for infrastructure, broadband. So, you know, it could be, and we're gonna do a call with all of you to really figure out in the detail what the money can be spent on. We know it can't be used for a tax cut. It can't be used for pension issues. So it's basically, you know, a great shot in the arm for Mahoning County. Trumbull, since I see the presses on, Trumbull County is gonna get $38 million. The city of Youngstown is going to get $88 million. Warren's gonna get $29 million. So this is a huge shot in the arm for local governments. And I think an opportunity for, not to just stabilize, but there may be an opportunity here for us, you know, collectively to do something big for, you know, the broader community. So I just wanted to let you know that, thank all of you for all of your support. And, you know, like I said, it took us about a year to get this done. But with the change in the Senate, we were able to pass it through. And that means significant investment into our community. So we're really excited about it.
Congressman, that's great news. And I have one question for you. Included in this bill, in addition to the $44 million, the impact payments to working families. The people who received the $600 last time, will they be getting the $1,400 this time? Is that part of this package?
There's a, yeah, 14. So just to give you a snapshot of it, it extends unemployment until early in September. So all of the people in the community who are, you know, unable to find a job, that goes till September 6th. The $1,400 payment is included in there as well. And there's money also, and we'll get more detail as to how this unfolds. But there's billions of dollars in here for help with rent and utilities. We know that's been a crisis for so many families across the country. So there'll be money in there for that as well. So, you know, there's a lot of good things in here to help working class people, working class communities.
I'll tell you what, it's been a big help to our county and our community. We had a lot of people whose businesses, they had, you know, trouble reopening, so they had funds to help them there. Utilities, rent payments, mortgage payments. It was a blessing. So I'm glad to see that you were able to keep that part of the language in that bill. So kudos to you.
Yep. No, we appreciate it. And like I said, what I think we'll do is we'll probably jump on a call. We'll get somebody over to the Department of Treasury, you know, with the county commissioners, mayors, and everyone. And we'll go through in detail what the parameters are. I want to make sure you all have all the options that you need. Because I know the needs are great, and this is, like I said, a great opportunity for us in the local area to maybe, you know, with everybody getting a significant amount of money, there may be an opportunity to do something big. I don't necessarily know what that is, but, you know, we should think about how we're gonna plug the region into the global economy. Maybe it's broadband, maybe it's infrastructure project, maybe it's something. But we'll have those conversations. But I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come on. And we're happy to stay connected and answer any questions you may have.
Carol has a comment.
You know what, Congressman, I really appreciate you coming on and giving us that. I think through the pandemic, you've been awesome with Mahoning County in government and trying to get us what we need to have. And this goes to show that the leadership that you have in Washington is really bringing it home to the locals. Because we're a middle-class city, and our people need help. And government needs a little bit of assistance right now because of the pandemic. And you've just been a champion. And I must say, I text you the other day on the floor, you were my hero. Finally, I saw that side of you. I'm a happy kid.
That was the Italian coming out, Carol.
Oh, I know that was. Your mother is very proud of you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'll let you guys get to your meeting. Like I said, we'll stay in touch on the details of all of this.
Tim, I just wanted to echo my colleague's sentiments. You know, you've always been there for us. You've done an amazing job on behalf of the Valley, and Mahoning County specifically. Whenever we need something, you've been there for us. And it's sad that, from a federal standpoint, that this bill comes out and it helps, it's for people. It's not partisan. It's for people. It's been, you have been since last, middle of last year, trying to drive it down to local government, who has bared the brunt of so many of the cuts, both statewide and from the federal government, and trying to push it back to local government. It's sad that we don't have a bipartisan vote on this to embrace the local communities and help people. You know, we help businesses, we help the rich. But, you know, finally, we're pushing it down to local government and the middle class and help the average person. So thank you for your hard work. Look forward to seeing you when you come back into town. We're proud of you.
Thanks. Appreciate it, David. Thank you.
One more comment, Tim. We appreciate your bipartisanship. You've always reached across the aisle and tried to work with the other side. And I'll tell you, in this day and time, that's what people really want to see. They want to see both sides working together, and you've certainly done that. So.
Appreciate that. And thank you. Thank you. That's not always easy these days, but we'll keep it going. Appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. All right.
Good luck today.
Thank you.
Mr. Lowry, do you have anything you'd like to add?
So.
Introduce yourself.
So I'm Pat Lowry. I'm a senior advisor to the Congressman. And I always joke that that's more related to the fact that I'm his oldest staff member. So that makes me the senior advisor. But anyway, just wanted to mention one thing. Carol, I just said, just literally what he was speaking, because he talked about, you know, some of the usages of the money. I just literally emailed you a document on some of the uses for state and federal dollars.
Okay, and I will.
You can share it with your colleagues. Your email came up first, so that's, but that's really it. So anything we can do, you know, we're.
Can we call Carol our senior commissioner now? Are you the senior advisor?
Yes, we can.
Because you're the senior advisor.
We all went to school together. I want you to know that.
I know Briar Hill.
Northside. Northsiders.
So that's really it for me. But like I said, hopefully that document will be useful to you.
You know, that'll be very useful for us between now and the time we get.
My question's been tabled.
Tabled?
Yep.
You sure?
Positive.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the room? No? Paulie? We'll get to you later. All righty then. Well, that's great news. She'll be very happy. A lot of hard work. That took a while to get, it's a lot in the bill. It's a big chunk of change. So let's see what happens. Okay, that being said, I need a motion to approve previous minutes, sub board meeting number nine, and approval goes for paying.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes. Motion approved, journal entry.
Motion approved, journal entry is number one.
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Emilio Agueda? Yes.
Yes, moving on, travels to A, prosecutors, Gina.
Unmute yourself, Gina. What are we gonna do with you?
Sorry. Commissioners, the prosecutor's office is requesting approval for employee travel for the 2021 calendar year. These funds will cover expenses for employee-related travel associated with attendance at seminars and other educational training.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion approved, travels.
Motion approved, number two, travels, A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Mr. Emilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes, under agreements, letters A through J, Common Pleas. Is there anybody here from Common Pleas? No? Jim Fortunato.
Good morning, everyone. This is a first year entered into agreement, a third-year agreement will be in total with Common Pleas, with Community Correction Association for their probationary services.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Convention Visitors Bureau, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. Letter B is an agreement with K&amp;M Creative, McConnell Marketing. We once again solicited proposals for our ongoing marketing and advertising support. We've worked with K&amp;M for several years now, and their proposal, again, rose to the top of the pack. So this is an agreement to continue our relationship with them. And letter C is an agreement with ADRAK. This is a company that distributes our visitor guide across multiple, multiple locations in the state of Ohio along interstates, on rest stops, service plazas, hotels, places like that.
Thank you, Linda. County courts, Jim?
County courts will be moving into their new location. One requirement they need is to disassemble their current record system filing and move it to their new location. The vendor was the original system purchase. So they're the most familiar with dismantling it and reassembling it.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Letter E, EMA, Anna.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with Austintown Township to purchase APCO training supplies for the use and support of the required completion of the state of Ohio mandatory reporting requirements and compliance role in the amount of $5,000.
Thank you very much. Pat Genetti.
Good morning, everybody. This is where I take over. I think I have the rest of the meeting.
Pretty much.
All right, letter F, some memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Department of Transportation for use of the ODOT weight scales at no cost to the county. This is the joint program that the engineer's office and the sheriff's office has been participating in for several years now. Letter G is an agreement with Midwest and Bluegrass Rail to redesign the railroad crossing at Western Reserve Road near Southern Boulevard. This is to accommodate the widening project in the amount of $54,900. This is non-general funds. Letter H, this is an agreement with IBI Engineering for traffic impact studies in the amount of $25,000. Also non-general funds. Letter I and J are for the sanitary department. Letter I is an agreement with Comprehensive Work-Life Solutions for Employee Assistance Program for two years in the estimated amount of $1,500 per year. These are non-general funds. And letter J is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet for repairs to our 2011 Chevy Tahoe in the estimated amount of $2,491.30, also non-general funds.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Pat. Motion approved, agreements?
Motion approved, agreements, number three, A through J.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Agueda?
Yes.
Yes, change orders. Pat, again.
Commissioners, letter A is change order number one with Lindy paving for the South Avenue widening project in the amount of $41,821.43. This is non-general funds, 80% federally funded. Letter B is change order number five with Maruchian Gaffney excavating. This is for the Meridian Road Phase Two project. This resulted in a decrease amount of $94,506.92. Again, also non-general funds. And letter C is with the sanitary department. This is change order number three, an extra work order number three with JS Bova excavating for the emergency replacement repairs of storm sore at the Meander wastewater treatment plant in the total amount of $27,031.25, non-general funds as well.
Thanks, Pat. Motion approved, change orders?
Motion approved, change orders, number four, A through C.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Road closings, Pat.
Here we go again. Letter A, we're gonna close Stewart Road between Newcastle Road and Allison Drive between March 15th and the 24th. This is for color replacement prior to the upcoming countywide paving that's gonna take place.
Very good. Thank you. Motion approved, road closing.
Motion approved, road closings, number five, A.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, resolutions?
Motion to approve, resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Agueda?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions, A through F, Audrey.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving employment of Mary Ann Cosco to the full-time position of Director of Community Development at the Workforce Development Board of Mahoning and Columbiana Counties effective April 1st, 2021. I do have, I believe Bert is on. Bert, can you unmute yourself? You're on. All right, and then item B is a resolution to approve the agreement, addendum, and expenditures with the following agencies to assist with COVID-19 public health and funded by the CARES Act in the following amount, for men, local school district, $22,368, and for med back, $1,002.43, and that was to help with the $1099 reporting. And then Anna will.
Anna will do the rest? Okay, Anna.
Good morning, Commissioners. Letter C is a resolution to accept the donation from NOPEC Inc. of a cellphone charging station under its cellphone charging station program at no cost to the county.
Very nice. Thank you.
Letter D is a resolution of necessity to purchase one 2021 Ford Explorer from statewide Ford Lincoln through the state of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program in the estimated amount of $34,959.
Thank you, Anna.
Can I speak on that too?
Sure, Audrey.
Anna goes all over the county, some of the townships and everything else, and puts a lot of miles. We did have a used car for her, and that kind of broke down. And to give her something that's more dependable out there, and that's why Commissioners are joining up.
Can we get her a moped?
Motorcycle? No.
No. Scooter.
Dependable.
Oh, dependable and safe, yes.
Three-wheeler, trike.
That's right. Put a basket on the front.
For my books.
Okay. Recycling, Lou.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item E is two more additional destination agreements with these two facilities, bringing it up to 10, and this is part of our state mandate to require 15 years of landfill capacity for all of our residents and businesses.
Okay, thank you, Lou. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter F is a resolution to approve an agreement with the sanitary engineering union and one employee at the department.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion approved, resolutions?
Motion approved, resolutions, number two, A through F.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that ends the business portion of our meeting. And with that, I will open it up to go to the order, any electeds. I see Audrey Morales. Audrey?
Yes, how are you guys?
How are you? Any updates for us?
Good morning, Commissioners. Very brief update. We had our management evaluation review by the state, and we did pretty well. Out of 100 cases they surveyed, we had 26 with minimal errors that would require a little bit more training and correction. Out of the other 116 that, due to the pandemic, staff not fully being here, but was not a big major concern for the state. And out of the other 100, there were 12 inconsistent or incomplete. But the overall report from Mahoning County is that we did very well, even during a pandemic. So we already started setting up some training for our staff, and I'm very proud during a whole year of pandemic that we came out with very minimal areas in Mahoning County. So things that we can change, and the state was also proud of us.
Good deal.
Very good, Audrey.
This pandemic. So I appreciate, and with Audrey Tillis' help and the Commissioners getting the phones, we are up and running. Our call wait time is very minimal. And we're gonna keep it at that, and we're doing fine in Mahoning County JFS. And I thank you all for that.
Good deal, Audrey.
We appreciate your leadership there, Audrey.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Commissioners, if I could have a minute?
Go ahead.
I know a lot of you know that throughout the years I've participated in a lot of different types of charity events, mainly focused on, you know, bone marrow transplants and things like that, things that Missy had gone through. Well, recently, I was nominated by someone at the Cleveland Clinic to be part of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Man and Woman of the Year fundraiser. And Carol knows this. A lot of people aren't aware that I lost two brothers back in 2011 to 2012. My brother Phil, who was the dean of education at YSU, passed away rather unexpectedly from a very aggressive form of leukemia called AML, acute myeloid leukemia. So I've decided to take on this event. It's more of kind of a virtual fundraiser, but I'm gonna do it in honor of my late brother and hope to, again, help other families and people that have gone through this and experienced either, you know, the pain of dealing with cancer or the loss from cancer. So, you know, as tough as it is to lose somebody, you know, as time goes on, I've learned, you know, to kind of swallow that pain and use that to help other people. And it does feel good when you're assisting other people that are going through something as difficult and tragic as we've experienced. So I just wanted to bring that up and let everybody know that that has just started. And I'll be coming with more information in the weeks to come.
Well, Pat, you certainly deserve it. Because I remember when you were handling and dealing with Missy. You were, I mean, I don't know how you did it, but you did it. You were with her every single step between here, Cleveland, the donors, fundraisers, all that you did, losing your brothers. Amazing your standing. That's all I want to say to you.
Well, thank you.
Carol?
You know what, Pat, I did receive that in the mail yesterday and explain that you were man of the year. And I'm gonna share that application with my two partners when I go back up in the office.
Thank you, Carol.
More information, let us know.
Yeah, I will. Like I said, in the upcoming weeks, I'll be sending more information out and sharing the story a little bit more about Phil. You know, like I said, he had a diagnosis of AML and passed away within a week and a half. And it was untimely, really tragic and unexpected. But, you know, it's time to pay it forward and try to help other people now.
That's good. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Thanks for letting us know. Anyone else? Audrey?
I just wanted to say, my family, we have a very nice thing happening today. My brother-in-law, who had COVID and was dealing with that, between the hospital, nursing home, and everything, it's been like 81 days, and he'll be coming home today.
Oh, good deal.
Really excited and.
Thank God.
And it's a blessing.
That's from the Lord.
So I understand, you know, Carol, she went through with her brother.
Yeah, but.
The family and all the families that have dealt with this virus, you know.
81 days.
81 days.
Thank the Lord. And when they say, and I know I'm just speaking out of turn here. When they say the medical, in the case of this pandemic, it's more than medical. It's the power of the prayer. That's all I'm gonna say. And I know I probably shouldn't be addressing that here, but it is the power of the prayer that keeps you through this, because this is the most unknown illness that our whole country has suffered. And thank the Lord when that happens.
Yes.
I'm happy. Get the family back together, get the people vaccinated, we'll be good.
Yep.
Amen.
You need to go. Well, me and Dave did. Hi, Dave. Anthony, we're bringing you.
Can't discuss that HIPAA.
I'm bringing you, Anthony. I could discuss.
HR, PPA, Karen, are you listening? You're always telling me about HIPAA now. I'm using it.
Karen's on mute.
Gotta be careful. I got good lawyers. Okay. All righty. Who's next? Everyone? Nobody wants to say? How about Jerry? Jerry, how are you doing?
Hi, Anthony, if you're talking to me.
Yes, sir.
The one question I would ask you guys, if you can hear me. A couple of weeks ago, you mentioned you'd already received, as of however long ago, you'd received $30 million or $32 million in CARES Act money. Where does the $44 million go, if that number was right? Because it would sound like the money you've already received covered those expenses that you've already had. So is this money going forward, or how does that work?
Audrey?
Me and Anna will deal with, address it. The money that came into the county originally was, part of it came into the county. We got, in total, about 13 million, a little for the CARES Act. And then we've gotten just recently another 6.8 for rental assistance. That's only for rental assistance to individuals. The other part of the money that came into county was allocated out to the townships and the cities based from the state. And so those were those allocations. The county did not do with that. The money that we got in, approximately what in, about 64, 65% went out into the community to deal with different programs and stuff within the community. Most of the things that we dealt with, we dealt with the technology, addressing the technology, making sure people were able to remote and work from home. Those types of things that we had to take care of at that time, telephones, computers, laptops, things like that, to kind of help us continue to keep our services going and up and running. It did not deal with revenue loss or revenue replacement. And so that is something that this new bill will allow us to do, where we did have some dip in revenues in various areas. Were able to look at those and project that out and be able to pull that money into the county. So the county as a whole, we did not receive 32 million into county of government. It went out to various areas.
Okay, but the 32 was probably everything, county, township, cities?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And as you said, this is different in the. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And as you said, this is different in that this will allow you to recoup or recover lost revenue as opposed to expenses, just to make sure the county keeps running as it does?
Yes, yes. But it will also allow for dealing with infrastructure, things like that, projects. We don't have the full guidelines of it, but we, since we will get all of that, then we will have a better understanding of what we can use for. This is also can be used for small businesses and for the community also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jerry, hope you feel better.
Yeah, really.
Thank you Carol. I've got some stuff next week. Hopefully, it'll carry me in the right direction, but I appreciate your thoughts.
Okay, thank you Jerry. Anybody else? No? Okay, well, at this time, Commissioners, I think we will introduce our new office assistant to the three county commissioners, and she is here with us. Her name is Holly Gooden Mussolini. And Holly, we want to welcome you officially to the county and into working for the county commissioners, and not to embarrass you, but if you'd like to stand up and introduce yourself, if you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to the future.
Good.
Very good.
That's good.
Carol?
Bring your earplugs. Don't do. No, I think, I think you're going to be a good addition. We could always need, we always need some help. We, you know, we had Isla Willis there, and of course, she moved on, and I think you're going to be a great addition to our staff. You showed that in the last days I've worked with you downtown, so I wish you the best. We're, three of us are here. We're easy to talk to, and we'll be working with you, and Nancy, and Audrey, and Jimmy, and everybody else, and all the people in Mahoney County. You'll get the phone calls first. You'll be good. You'll be fine. You have a good personality for that. You'll be good.
Yes, you do.
It's been a great first week.
Yeah, it has. No, is this our comment time, or is this just talk to Holly time?
This is talk to Holly.
Oh, okay. Welcome Holly, as we've done in the past. It's great to have you on board, and it's, you know, I know that I'm going to be viewed the most because, you know, my desk has the most piles on it, and Holly's desk already is spotless. The need is a pin, all the boxes piled around are gone. You know, it's already, you know, come further in like a week than I've done in eight years in my own, you know, so I'm going to have to live up to your expectations, so.
Good thing.
Welcome. It's nice to have you and.
Thank you guys for having me.
You know, it's a, it's a good thing. So we, we're all a team. We work together, and so it's not always a happy family, but, you know, we, when we, when we fight, you know, we take Carol in the back. We have to, if we have to do, you know, if we have to give her a scoff, we take her in the back.
There you go.
So. And I want you to know, I'm the one who always comes out ahead of that. Yeah, if Carol has to give everything out of scoff, she takes us in the back.
Thank you.
Too bad.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Proud to have you all. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me.
All right, anyone else here?
No.
Dave, Carol, public comment?
Well. No, I just, I just want to reiterate what I said before about, I want to thank Congressman Ryan. I mean, this is a great thing with infrastructure, broadband, things that we could use in Mahoney County. It's going to be a great grouping of money for all of us and working across lines in a bipartisan way. I'm just excited about that. And it's middle-class people that need help, and he's there to help us. And so they promised that, and that's exactly what they did, and we'll, we'll get more detail on what we're allowed to do with that money. But we're, I'm excited about getting, getting that, and I know Youngstown should be very excited about what they're going to get with this pot, and soon as we get the details of that, we'll, we'll know how we're allowed to spend it. I just welcome Holly, and thank everybody for working through the pandemic, which is not over yet. We're still in the midst of that. God willing, it'll be over in a couple months. We're to the fact where we can lighten up on the restrictions a little bit. It's up to us to do what the governor still is asking us to do, self-distance, wear the mask. I also want to thank Ryan T-Tech, and also Dennis O'Hara, who worked very hard, and I think Aaron Bishop was a part of that as well for the regional area that they'll be using, which would be the Dillard's Building. It's centrally located, and it's a good facility of ninety-two thousand square feet, from what I understand. And kind of thank all parties for putting that together. Ryan is doing an excellent job for Mahoney County, and Aaron is doing an excellent job for the city of Youngstown. To have those two great people in position, Mahoney County, all of us should be very proud of who we have. It's teamwork, not only within Mahoney County, but across the lines. So we're all one big happy family to work together to make all our residents healthy and get the vaccine. So with that, I will thank them again. Also thank the Eastwood Mall, the Kafaro Company, and the people that were involved in working with Ryan and the mall, the mall people, the manager of the mall, I understand is helping out to, to a degree. So let's get that up and running, and let's get all our Mahoney County people vaccinated, so we could have some type of an activity by September, so we could leave the house.
September? Yes?
You don't want to wait till September?
No, I want it May one.
Hey, I'm in. If it could be May one, I'm in.
Forget when I get my shot, so. Soon as I get my shot, I want it done. No, I would, you know, just piggyback on what, you know, we've said already, but, you know, the Ryan and the Board of Health, both Ryan and Aaron have done an amazing job and looked at many sites, turning it into regional. You know, I really thank Austin Township for turning over their senior center and allowing the utilization of the senior center, which I'm proud to say I was one of three that created. And the, it's done, they've done a great job there. The senior center employees who aren't working now because there's no people coming in have been there volunteering.
Wow.
The entire time, you know, and, and helping through all of the shots and everything being given and organizing people. And Jim Hansen, that, Hanson, that is the director over there, has done a great job. And, you know, so, but the problem therein lies, when you turn it into a regional site, is that they want to do fifteen, a hundred shots a day, and they've been doing up to as many as a thousand in a day, but it gets very cumbersome going through, even though, you know, they've done it and they've done it well. This will allow for more parking. The other, the other difference is, is they want to do weekends because they're hoping people are going back to work and don't have during the daytime to be scheduled to go through and get their shot Monday morning or Tuesday afternoon. So they're going to do fifteen hundred, up to fifteen hundred a day, like on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, so that'll work out great because there's one level, lot of access, a lot of parking. And as you said, Kafaro Corporation owns that building now, and they've given it to us rent-free to utilize for the pandemic. So thanks to, you know, to the family and the corporation for what they've done on behalf of Mahoney County. I did want to say that the, with the dollars that are coming in, like Jerry Riccielli referred to, this board has made it a focus, a primary focus, to help people in the county. You know, we're probably the largest distributor countywide from a percentage of money received, giving back to local, to small businesses, and to the residents that need it for utility and for rent assistance. So, you know, obviously, we're going to look at what programs are out there and the need that's out there, and our focus is going to be to help small businesses, because Mahoney County runs, the United States runs on small businesses. You know, companies with a hundred employees or less are really what make the world go round. The majority of people that are employed in the United States are employed by small businesses. So we need to keep them up and running. We need to get them back on their feet, you know, if they've had to close down during this period of time. So, you know, our focus is going to be that, I'm sure. Also, you know, we look at broadband, you know, we see the need now. We've had, we see where the need is, actually, and we need to partner with all the political subdivisions on that. We already work, have been working for over a year with Eastgate on doing a study for the broadband between Ashtabula County, Trumbull County, and Mahoney County. We've partnered, and we should have that coming up, the study and the recommendations. And so we're in a good position to be able to utilize it. I know that the one, the congressman had talked to us that one point two million was already in the works and allocated from Mahoney County for broadband expansion. So that's going to be, you know, a good project to move forward on, to see if we're covered and how we can do it. But, you know, like everything, all of a sudden, there'll be a hundred new companies coming up, you know, that have, you know, new widgets to sell you because they see money, you know, and, and my approach has always been to, you know, be conservative on what you do and your approach, because, you know, you don't know what the future holds. And we always need to have, like we've, we've been very prudent in how we spend money. We have the stabilization reserve, you know, we have the healthcare fund, you know, we really prepare for the unexpected, you know, like we've always said that, you know, we didn't anticipate the pandemic, but the way we've been in our spending over the last six or eight years, we were prepared. So, you know, you always need to be, you know, prepared for the unexpected, whatever that would be. I do have to, you know, I like to beat on Pat, you know, I see his name still up there, but he's probably George from Seinfeld sleeping under his desk now. He's got that little pillow in mind, you know, but Pat is a, is a good friend and a good person, and, you know, kudos to him for, you know, getting on board to try and help raise money for the Leukemia Foundation. There's so many needs out there, and hopefully, one thing we've learned throughout this entire process is maybe the drug companies have found a way for better gene therapy, you know, better treatment, better training, you know, better focus on developing new medicines, and, you know, and we can find cures to these things that have continued to, you know, devastate our community and our families for so many years. And, you know, I, I think that we've talked about in the past, but in nineteen sixty, when they started the decade of the sixties, they said, they put out a questionnaire, what do you think will be accomplished before nineteen-seventy in the next ten years? And the number one thing they said was, number one, out of the top ten was that we'll cure cancer, and number ten out of the top ten was we'll put a man on the moon. And so what happened? You know, we still haven't cured cancer over fifty years later, and, you know, we've landed people on Mars, or landed a satellite on Mars just recently. So, you know, we need to move forward with the, with the medicine and the testing and the, and the experiments that we're doing that probably COVID's brought out. And the road closings, Pat, if you were there, I wanted to ask you, when you're going to open Mahoney? You know, I see all these closings, you know, it's about time you opened one, and you're not going to, you're not going to show your face.
Close it off from your street over, right here.
I'm telling you, the other day, I left from downtown, you know, I can't get out of Mahoney, so I go the normal route backwards through the park. The parks got both roads closed off because they're cutting, cutting trees down. I had to wind around through the park. It took me twenty minutes to get out. Then this morning, now they've got different parts of six-eighty closed.
Were you lost in the park?
No, I wasn't.
He was jogging.
You were lost, that's.
No.
You were jogging.
I went across the old.
Jimmy passed you a hundred times.
What do we call the bridge down there, the old?
Silver Bridge.
Suspension or Cinderella.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
The Witch's Bridge.
Witch's Bridge.
Oh, I never heard that.
I never heard that. That's why I don't go there.
Because it's.
I won't, I won't comment on that. But that's all I have, and welcome Holly. We appreciate you being here, you know?
Okay.
That's it. Well, you know, just in closing, I'd like to say there's been a lot of painful lessons learned from this pandemic. Unfortunately, families have suffered from this, and really this shouldn't had to be. If this pandemic would not have taken hold of our country, we wouldn't have to have gone through this, but it did. And I just want to say that the impact payments to people and families, that's going to definitely help them. But what I'm trying to say and look at this bill, and I haven't read it all, but whenever you do that, there has to be what's called a sustainability factor. You know, fourteen hundred is going to help. What happens when that fourteen hundred runs out? And hopefully, the rest of this allocation or whatever else is in this bill is going to look forward to the future, for businesses can reopen, for coffers could start filling back up, people can start getting to work, for they can sustain some type of life in the future. And as far as the mass vaccination clinics, I want to credit Board of Health, the Governor's Office, all the local agencies here for logistically getting it right, because we are giving more shots. The vaccines are coming in. Johnson and Johnson is talking about a hundred million additional shots. That's the one-time shot. So as the months go by, as more people get mass vaccinations, hopefully, this will go down. Be very careful when you listen to Dr. Fauci. He had a grim, grim message the other night, which I didn't like, but I'm not going to repeat it. But let's continue to do what we're doing, and I'm very proud of what Mahoney County did here. And what Jerry was asking was, you know, that was additional funds that the county received that we actually just gave all back to the community, to every segment of the community, to make sure that they're able to sustain either what they didn't have or what they were going to lose. It had nothing to do with the general fund. Our general fund maintains a steady revenue stream. These were funds that were given to us from the CARES Act to give out to the community, and our staff did a wonderful job getting that money out. Over two million pieces of P P E was given out, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, you name it, we did it. We didn't keep any of those funds. We gave it to the sheriff. We started a community fund. We did a lot of things, and Audrey and her staff, and Anna, how they came up with how we can spend it because there was strings attached as to how we could spend these funds. We had to be careful because we ended up in an audit situation. So Audrey went through it tooth and nail, and I'm sure we're going to do that, Audrey, with this new forty-four million, how we're going to handle this, if in fact, it stays the way it is. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. And Nancy, our next meeting. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
No. Yes.
Commissioner Tappacone.
Nay.
We have to stay here Nancy.
Need to adjourn.